That's another issue. So by sifting out chunks of the plant and root system as well as soil washing, so basically washing all the dirt off of the plant and the root system and separating it that way, you could do. But once you do that, almost as a secondary step, you'd want to then incinerate that soil so that if any fragments were left in it, that you would heat it so hot that it would not be able to survive. But by sifting it first, you're getting all the large pieces out and then when you incinerate it, it's less, there's not, there's less of a chance for anything to regrow because the fragments are so small, so the heat actually gets to it. Whereas if you have larger roots in there, it's less likely to penetrate all the way to the center of that root. So the soil sifting, soil washing is kind of complementary to the incineration process, or at least from my perspective of the way I had interpreted that and from experience of talking to other people about it as well. Then the final solution is to move it off-site, relocate it to a disposal or treatment facility. I tried to look and to see if there was any facilities that would accept it and through my research, I was not actually able to find anyone or any place that would. But it also is not a very preferred route to go as all the different types, all the possibility of contaminating the road along the way and just how secure you have to be with containing that soil. So at the end of the day, the different types of control methods for the district to be able to take and to evaluate, how to assess this, is to implement a site management plan for each of the properties and determine the best available approach. So some sites will be better than others for different methods due to the water table or what is in that area. And either way, early chemical treatment, so any sites that are currently, that currently have knotweed on them, having them treated with chemicals right away is the best chance to reduce the amount that's currently on that site. Policies and regulations, so from what I was able to find, there's nothing that specifically addresses knotweed. There is limited on invasive species like knotweed. So there's no provincial or federal legislation that applies to soil, and that is a whole new ballgame, it seems. Talking to different members of BC that are a part of different invasive species groups, they have said that they've been working on a working group to try and deal with contaminated soil that has, or soil contaminated by different types of knotweed or other types of invasive species, since there's nothing really in place to deal with that. It is not a, invasive species is not considered a contaminated item and you cannot consider it contaminated soil. But through this, it would, it's almost like you need to address it like it's contaminated soil because it's treated the same way essentially. The UK has a policy in place that specifically addresses soil-related knotweed issues. They've been dealing with this for a long time. There's also much huger, much larger penalties and fines associated with having knotweed on your land or nearby because of its spread. But reviewing them, it's always placed on the landowner or the current residents to ensure that it doesn't spread and to take care of the issue, no matter the cost, because generally the fees associated with that will be greater. The municipal regulations in Canada specify details pertaining to herbicides, unsightly yards and contaminated soil but not soil contaminated with invasive species. So nothing that specifically deals with this type of situation. The BC Weed Control Act is, states that the responsibility of every landowner, it's the responsibility of every landowner to control noxious weeds growing on the property. So again, it's up to the landowner to deal with it. And there are very limited policies in place at the moment. The current site alteration bylaw regulates movement of soil, including soil with invasive species at the moment, but it only is too, very specific to certain areas. And final recommendation, recommendations are to implement a new invasive species bylaw. Any invasive species must be controlled along with soil at development sites. Development permit details that pertain to environmental aspects describe methods owners must take prior to developing the site. So control methods and some sort of plan for current owners or amend current bylaws, amending the site alteration bylaw to further describe the steps a developer is required to follow when their site contains invasive species. The steps can include, can include approved control methods for the removal of soil containing invasive species or amending the unsightly premises bylaw to state that any growth of invasive species must be controlled and further include approved methods to control it. So essentially some sort of method or plan for homeowners and residents to follow when they are dealing with this type of issue. Require developers to implement a site management plan and the way that they will be treating it and make sure it, the treatment begins immediately. Require landlords to submit a knotweed management plan. This more so might be a tracking, so just so landowners are tracking when or if they have Japanese knotweed on their land and what they did to try and control it. And make sure that the developers and residents are educated on what invasive, what knotweed is and how to deal with it. Having a mapping system so that you can easily see which areas are impacted by knotweed. I know I talked to one, I believe it was Langley, they actually have a layer put onto their city GII system that pinpoints all the sites that have knotweed on it. And so rather than their municipality going on to the invasive species website and going way out of their way to look to see if there's any invasive species before they're starting to do any construction, they just have to turn on that GIS layer and see, hey, these are all the areas that have site. Oh, look, this one site that we actually have to build on or do construction on for the city has knotweed, maybe we should look into this type thing. So just kind of taking that one step out to make it easier as well. Reviewing decommissioned gravel pits and mines and potential sites for disposal. So moving it off-site might just work. And then continue to collaborate with the intermin, interminister ministry invasive species working group as they are the ones that are currently looking into dealing with the soil contamination of invasive species. And I'll turn it over to...
Oh, great. Okay. Oh, next, do you want me just to...
Sure.
Before we...
We're really late, so...
Okay, I'll be really quick. So before we go to questions, I just wanted to very quickly describe that concurrently, while this report was going on, there were new initiatives that we continue to find out about. So there are similar challenges being faced in the, in the Lower Mainland and, and so to speak, it's an evolving landscape. So during the last year or so, there's been the formation of a few groups tackling this very issue, invasives and soils. And so for example, Lower Mainland Soils and Invasive Species Working Group, the Metro-Vancouver Regional Invasive Species Task Force and District of Squamish staff are now coordinating with them and in discussions with them. Also, there was an invasive species forum this past January and there were several sessions on this topic and attended by government representatives as well as local government staff. And, and then also the province indicated that they will be developing best management practices for knotweed on crown lands and they anticipate developing this in the next year or so. So while this may not solve District of Squamish's soils issue, at least it's some, it's, it's in the right direction for knotweed best management practices. So very quickly, the, this project and the recommendations that come from the report do align with council strategic plan and District of Squamish policy. So strategic priority areas, customer service that is solution-driven and bylaws and policies that protect natural places. And then also within our OCP bylaw, policies which support the project are paraphrasing protection of areas with significant natural habitat value, support for restoration efforts and development of regulatory bylaws to address soils. Okay, the implications of, of the, the project recommendations would be providing clarity and direction for landowners on their responsibilities and providing acceptable practices for soils containing invasives. And then also identifying, sorry, yes, identifying acceptable practices. There would be, with the development of a new invasive species bylaw, there would be an amendment required to the municipal ticket information bylaw as well. And public engagement so far has been at the IAP2 level of informed. So I wanted to quickly go through the recommendations before council. So that council received the report by, prepared by TETRA-Tech on knotweed disposal and, and management. That council directs staff to develop a bylaw regulating invasive species as well as a policy for...
He might have to read it all in...
I'm, okay.
Yeah.
I was just paraphrasing.
Okay, good.
As well as a policy for off-site burial of soils. That council directs staff to collaborate with the Cedar Sky Invasive Species Council to develop best management practices for knotweed and that staff continue working with Sisk, the Cedar Sky Invasive Species Council on non-regulatory approaches for the management of knotweed. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you. Any questions? What's the question?
Well, an observation, knotweed, it's just, there, I, I've got a place on the Gulf Islands, so the climate there is quite a bit different than here, it's a lot rudders. And about 20 years ago, I saw a clump of knotweed down at the ferry terminal and I thought, oh my God. And it was this big, and the lady that used to own the house planted it. That's how big it stayed 20 years later, it was that big. It was so dry over there, couldn't grow. So I'm just saying that because potentially we're digging out some really juicy soil. Maybe we could be trucking it to some dry place.
I thought you were gonna suggest we try to alter the weather.
That's up to you. No, I have to go, only I counsel. Anyway, I mean, just to, you know, I mean, I really did notice that and I thought, oh. And the GIS layer, I think we ought to do that. I think that's something that we should put down in our work list because we should be tracking it, you know? And, you know, when you find a spot, I mean, I can drive you around and show you 100 spots this afternoon.
I've given it to Dan. You haven't.
Yeah. You know, because then you could write down, you know, like a three-by-five meter spot and then 10 years later, you go back and it's 30 by 40 meter.
Yeah. There's a provincial layer that Dan, I've given him access to, so he can integrate it into the system. And we also take a, we also record a more detailed site level data that we, we're gonna give to Dan. We have that last year, but this year.
And then when you talked about burial sites, and I don't know if I'm gonna start to post-agricate, I mean, they've got the biggest gravel pit. Perhaps they might be able to find a spot and if you pay them a little bit, they might take the stuff rather than us contamining it more. Thank you.
So in developing a new bylaw, is it, does it make sense to do it within the other site alteration bylaw that we're completing or is it better that it's separate? Like, we want people looking in two places or should it all be in one place when it has to do with soil?
So staff believe that it should be separate and that's because the invasive species bylaw would regulate invasive species. So it would, that's where the requirement for landowners to manage the invasive species on their land would come from. And any associated fines should that be the path that the district chooses. It's also important that the site alteration bylaw reference invasive species because it, when it's intermixed with soil, they become one and the same or it needs to be dealt with together. But the purpose of the site alteration bylaw is to manage soils, not regulate invasive species specifically.
I'm looking across.
Yeah.
Right. Ha. Another question was, in your research in, I mean, this, between TETRA-Tech and staff, you know, we've had a lot of lots sit empty for a very long time and the time to start treating those lots is when they're sitting idle waiting for development. So are there regulations we can put in place or incentives to get developers to start working on control well in advance? Like, I think this may be part of the education piece, if we do like, it's gonna cost you this if you wait until you're, get your development permit. Or if you start today, these are your costs over the next two years and might save the hope. Like, like what can we do to encourage people to, to start looking at this? And the other question I had was, can we put like something on title saying, you've got knotweed and you have to, if you buy this land, you've got to deal with it? That was my question.
Yeah, and those will be contemplated within the bylaw theoretically that council can consider.
Yeah.
Yes. Did you want me to address those questions or...
No, those are, if that comes forward in the bylaw, those are the kinds of questions that I'm looking for, is those things that get people moving earlier. And if we can, you know, in the same way that we just put section 57 on some properties for safety issues, you know, it's easy to put on and off, but if you're gonna buy a property, you should probably know you just took on a liability of, you know, meters and meters worth of knotweed.
Yeah, I'm looking for someone to move this. You can move it, Tettey, for us.
I'll just look on my phone.
Okay.
I was gonna mention, I mean, both those come with SecureNet or my next, but, you know, yes, you can do on-title stuff, I mean, that's getting, that's the way you really address it. But we have to be careful because the district's got millions of dollars worth of knotweed on their property. And I know people that go, look, there's knotweed 30 feet down the street and then two years later, it's 20 feet down the street and then pretty soon it's on their property. I mean, what do you do when your neighbor's property contaminates you? And in our case, it's district property. You know, and why don't you better make sure to write that down in that? Because if we demand everybody does theirs, we're demanding we do ours.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion. I'm gonna click council raise from my house prior. Any more comments on this?
Just one more.
Yep. I'm sorry.
You mentioned that we're getting closer to stem injection? I thought we were already doing stem injections. That was a bit confusing.
I can clarify on that. So about a year and a half ago, the province of BC submitted a request to the feds to ask for a reinterpretation of the label. So it was previously interpreted under the label that stem injection was an acceptable use of glyphosate and then it was reinterpreted that it wasn't. So they're amending the label right now and until the label is amended, we can't use stem injection for glyphosate. And glyphosate was the only herbicide that had that interpretation. So we, stem injection's off the table for now, but hopefully in the fall, we'll have it back. So it's foliar spray for now.
Is that Roundup?
Yep. Yeah, it's in Roundup, it's in Vantage.
Okay, great. Looking forward to this coming back. Thank you very much for all your work. It's a good, good call to question. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. We're gonna go right into correspondence from the SLRD, we refer to invasive species service, area bi, uh, service area bylaw? And we just referred this to the committee, so I know that staff wanted to make sure we're covering any concerns or issues that may or may not be there. So you want to get some stuff clarified on this?
Yes, so I had some questions when this came up a week ago and we had a short conversation about this. Counselor referred to staff and Caroline spent some time talking to the SLRD staff. So I'll actually just turn it over to Caroline for, bring us up to speed on that.
Great, thank you. So we had two questions and our first question was, how specifically is the district benefiting from this type of a service? And so the answer is that because invasive species know no bounds, that the issue could really benefit from a more regional approach. And so it would be broader control, broader control and regulatory work that would benefit the entire region. So it's less about point source control and, and more about managing the issue on a regional scale. And by providing the funding directly to the societies who already have programs that they've designed, that fit locally and, and that they're implementing, that they can then make the determination on how best the funds could be used to, to find solutions to the various invasive species problems in the region.
So just, so just to give some background, the, the SLRD boards talked about this quite a bit over the years. As we realize here, the problem is much bigger than the pittance of funding we're throwing towards the issue. And we're obviously doing some stuff, managing some stuff ourselves through our staff here locally, but we also fund a little bit through the invasive species council to deal with the bigger, broader community issues as well. When the SLRD was starting to think, we wanted to figure out a more, this is about funding, right? We wanted to figure out a more sustainable funding mechanism for the Lillawat Society and the Cedar Sky Society. And we also thought that the societies, as Caroline just said, were better equipped to really prioritize the items, whether they be in municipal boundaries or not, as, as we've been discussing at the SLRD. You know, they don't say, oh, Squamish, we're not gonna go any further. Delverway, the SLS, and vice versa. So it was really about making sure, sort of de-politicizing it, creating a, through the SLRD, now each municipality are gonna do their own funding through their own budgets, but through the SLRD, creating a funding mechanism that actually helps fund the Cedar Sky invasives on a more predictable and sustainable level as well as the equivalent group up in the Lillawat areas to cover up the whole SLRD. So that's where this came in. And with regard to the amounts, as you can see through the report, we sort of contemplated a variety of different formula to sort of figure out how to create this service area. And we just wanted to make it nice and simple, the first year, 10, 10, 10, 25, 25, 25. So that was, it really wasn't overly debated or discussed. We wanted to create something nice and simple, to create a nice amount of funding for Cedar Sky invasives and Lillawat. And that they would then prioritize both within and outside municipal boundaries in terms of what would be the priority. So just if you don't know about regional district, I think there's 100, we can't say there's 187 different service area funding pots within the regional district. This is how regional districts, but regional districts get funded and you actually have to set up the service in order to create the funding mechanism through. And so that, that's what this is really about, is funding mechanism through the SLRD. You can see in the report, there's other ways we could do it. Currently, it's just been sort of done through general government and it's has, it's been nowhere near this amount. We decided to up the amount this year. But we've just done it through general government. We can continue doing it that way. Through a service area bylaw, it takes that out of the general government function and creates a very specific funding mechanism within the SLRD.
And just to speak to regional versus municipal benefit, that very point came up at the regional district meeting. Another director raised the question about what would we do for my municipality? And I think we, after discussing that, said that this is really for a regional approach to the problem because it's in addition to, it doesn't replace anything that's being done by individual municipalities. And one year, depending on where the problem is, it might all be up in the Raylorn area and another year, it might all be down in the Tan area. Wherever the problem is, we'll deal with it on a regional basis because it doesn't know any boundaries and that's the regional problem.
And the councils would make those educated determinations through their work. So that's, so unless people see a huge problem with that, I'll suggest, I'll, I'll just move the, I'll just move the recommended, that we endorse the approach of...
Sorry, you finished?
I was hoping she was, that was my...
Great, well, we had two questions. One was with regulatory bylaw.
What's that?
There's also a regulatory bylaw portion to this. There's funding and associated, associated bylaws to fund. There's also a question of a regulatory bylaw, which is contemplated by the SLRD staff. And then a question of how that would interact with our bylaw. And I, I think our, our take on that is that we feel like we're going down a good direction with our bylaw and we wanna have that control and, and including ticketing and whatever we wanna do internally, but we would work to, work with them to make sure we're not...
Our bylaws are gonna deal with our, but I think what the SLRD board wants to do is make sure we're dovetailing, that we don't have different rules in the SLRD, particularly where we in the rural areas around particular municipalities. So we wanna make sure the SLRD regulatory bylaws are mirroring or dovetailing or whatever. Basically, we'd like to create one system through. So if we develop a regulatory bylaw here, my hope is that the SLRD takes that the same. Like, everyone has the same bylaw, so we're not going, okay, we're in Britannia Beach now, we don't have to do this, but we can do this. We want it to be streamlined and consistent, everybody just...
On that note, about the soil bylaws, one of the things that the TETRA-Tech report didn't include is that the SLRD does have a soil deposition bylaw that you guys probably wanna dovetail.
And is it the whole SLRD or is it one specific area of the SLRD?
No, it's, it's all lands within the SLRD except municipal areas.
Except municipal, so what we're trying to do is make sure these are all the same and not have different ones depending on the jurisdiction, so...
He took the words right out of Chris's mouth.
What's that?
He took the words right out of Chris's mouth.
Yeah.
Okay, or he took yours, whichever you might want.
Just to clarify, I mean, we did talk about some bylaws there, is that what you referred to? I mean, those that list of...
No, we were talking about district bylaws.
Yeah, but that's what you were, so when we vote on this, are we voting on those as well?
No, this is, we're on a different topic.
We're already doing those?
We will be creating a District of Squamish bylaw.
Yeah.
Or bylaws.
Which is what we...
Which we, yeah, which we've just voted on. And we will work with the SLRD to make sure that our, our bylaw, although they may not be identical, is, isn't contradictory and works together.
No, we just sent them away to develop it.
And you have to...
We haven't, we can't see it yet. So...
No, that's...
So I will move that we consent the municipal regional invasive species service establishment. Second by counsel raise. Any questions, any comments? All the question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Thanks very much. Right, Linda?
Yes.
12 minutes?
Yes.
So in your packages, you were provided a draft update to the strategic plan as well as our now familiar-looking matrix, which indicates a more detailed update on where the items are at. And then we have staff graciously provide bigger versions because the one you have was pretty small. I have a few I'd like to point out to you in terms of the matrix. And then if there are any specifically that council has questions about, obviously you will do that. So if you go to healthy community, third one down, complete an action plan for safe routes to school. When we were working with staff to update the matrix, if you look at the line below, we felt that rewording it was more appropriate because we now have the plan, which is develop a safe routes to school program, second down. Fourth down, implement the safe routes to school program as our rewording because we're now implementing it. We felt that complete an action plan didn't encompass the fact that we're actually implementing the action plan. So that's just an update on the wording for your clarification. A couple more down, official community plan update. Did send council an email, but for the public, want to let you know that we are currently integrating feedback still from our work with stakeholders. The OCP is behind schedule, the engagement with stakeholders is very thorough and it's taking us a bit longer than anticipated. That draft will be provided around April 5th to the, to council as well as the community advisory committee and they are meeting on April 10th. April 18th, staff will come back to council at a committee of the whole for council's feedback, after which staff will go back out to the community for more wholesome engagement on where we're at to date.
So as far as, the first time I have participated in an OCP, there is about 15 different community engagements and they were wholesome. And to date, I've been to one and it was basically put stickers on where you want bike lanes and no allergy. So I really, it was great walking in and to see all the engagement, there was no high level land use. You know, the first time I did an OCP with a district, the level of land use planning of what you want to see in your neighborhoods, where is this zoning accurate, where is this zoning not accurate? It was immense. And this time, I don't know what high level, I, I'm, maybe there's some sort of high level engagement that's happening that we don't know about, but the one big engagement that we did was at the train station, is what the community remem... remembers. And other than that, the community, except for some pizza parties and the, I don't know when the committee is met, but I really don't see that we've done robust community engagement. I haven't heard about it basically since that moment. You know, maybe the committee's meeting, maybe not, but we've had a few updates at council. But as far as high level land use planning, and what do you want to see in this area, and what would you like to see in your legal board?
So this is coming on April 18th?
But that's coming as a draft to council without community.
For clarification, Mayor Heitzman, in terms of the process, before going to the community, staff want council to weigh in on that growth management, on that land use planning, incorporating the engagement date back out to the community. That's the order. This is not a draft, final draft for council endorsement and then going to the community. This is a touchstone where we're at.
So just to clarify too, it's coming to council April 18th?
Eighteenth.
No, but there, isn't there something coming to council?
Yeah, so the, okay, the actual draft policies written will be provided to council in advance of the 18th meeting, because there's so much information to be read. And the objective is to have council weigh in on the 18th. The committee will be weighing in on the 10th in terms of, is it readable, has it captured what we've heard to date, comes to council for the more robust land use growth management and policy discussion, it will at that point have incorporated First Nations engagement with Swamsh Nation. And then after that committee of the whole, will be reinvigorating more community engagement at that time.
And just to clarify, I thought you, I thought council was receiving it before it went to the community advisory committee?
Yes, yeah, community advisory group. I'll back up with dates.
Please, yeah.
Council will receive, council and the community advisory committee will receive the draft on around April 4th or 5th. Community advisory committee meeting is April 10th, committee of the whole is April 18th. Wholesome public engagement again is following that date.
So that's a lot of policy to inform with, as far, you know, I'm just worried, because, you know, getting, getting to a draft stage without robust and wholesome community engagement. And I'm not talking about small group pizza parties, I'm talking about robust community engagement. And I just, compared to doing other engagements on other items, this is the biggest one we have. This is the biggest item that we have to go to the public. And I don't want to be missing public engagement, and then getting policies, and then approving policies, and then going and saying, what do you think? They should be informed by the community. So I'm hoping it's not the backwards way of, you know, looking at policy and saying, yeah, that looks great, and then going and informing. I'm hoping it's actually collaborating with the community, because this is, the community's, it's not our goal to be this community.
Have we forgotten the exact engagement things that have gone through? Because it's certainly been more than pizza parties and the meeting at, well, I just want to make sure that we're not...
With our, with the general community?
Yes, there's been, there's been meetings that you've missed that have happened with the community. They've been well attended, they've been well broadcast, there's been surveys.
Lot of active transportation in those two things, but not on the land use part.
Anyway, we're going to get back, we'll bring that back to council too, the whole engagement piece to it. And then we want to make sure, I mean, when we started this process out, we wanted to make sure we were engaging the community really well. I think the majority of that engagement happened in the first six months, and we haven't seen it. So it's hard, it's hard to sort of track back to what happened a year ago, six months ago. But the last six months, it has been, I think that's the problem, it has been sort of been the scripting part of it, and it's been in the Swamsh Nation consultation part of it. So it's been sort of done a little bit out of the public eye, because it's literally just taking doodles of information the public have given us, and plunking it into a document. And so that's, and we've had some staff go on pat leave and write different things. So it has been a little bit challenged, and that's why we're delayed in the process. So I want, I just don't want to get, this is a strategic planning discussion. I, we're going to get the draft, or some version of the draft on the 4th, and maybe we can plan a little bit of time to make sure we go over what public engagement has been done, see if there's any gaps that we've missed, or any groups or facility we've missed within that, so that in this last piece of engagement, once the actual sort of draft policies get out there for comment, we can make sure we're being really inclusive and constructive in that a little bit.
And Mayor Heitzman, if I could just clarify, the April 18th meeting is not for council approval of the policy or approval of the draft, it's for council input and then community input. There's no ask in terms of approval. So it's just for clarification.
And then, and then the discussion on the 18th is going to speak to specific, big land use and policy issues around it. And maybe we'll have a little refresh in terms of how, you know, that initial input stage, priorities, priority setting piece of the engagement that we did, the drafting, which is what we're in now, which is taking a little bit longer than we all anticipated. And no fault of anyone's, I think we were a little overly ambitious in our original design. But we'll get, we'll make sure. And I, you know, I think that's always the debate, is have we done enough? Have we done too little?
It's just not here.
Has it been meaningful? And then there's been a bit of a vacuum while it gets actual, taking all this stuff and putting it into policies. It's a, it's writing an novel. Not a novel, like a, it's writing an encyclopedia in a six-month period. So we, I, we'll, we'll go.
And just, you know, we hired, is it Urban Systems?
Modus.
Yeah, Modus, okay. So I've seen Modus in the community as well. So that's, yeah, I absolutely agree.
They were here a lot in the first six months.
Yeah, the first six months, but only that one big meeting for the public to really dig into. If there's been other meetings since?
There's been lots of them. Big public meetings, that right part with the big one.
Yeah.
There's other pieces that are done, and then...
Lots of mobility.
No, no, it wasn't, it was all land use. That's right, Chappelle, it was all land use. The active transportation was other. So we'll go over all that stuff. On the strategic plan, yeah.
Call Susan, Councilor Race.
Your wife cried, biggie.
On the plan, number one, schedule council, hold meetings in locations outside the chambers. Now, talking about public engagement, I can remember we had a couple of, what do you call it, town hall meetings? Maybe we should schedule, schedule one, then just shake things up a bit. I really like this format, you know. The only one thing I see here is on the green page, there's one at the bottom, complete marine strategy phase two. I'd like to rub out phase two. Just put complete marine strategy. No phases, let's just do it. We've only got a year and a half left.
Do we have a phase three in the marine strategy, or is it two now?
Well, let's just...
I have another one.
I believe there were two phases, and we did discussions part of the budget, it's back in the work program and the budget for...
Yeah, so we want to get that done. I think the point, there isn't a phase three, so phase two means complete.
So we can take that as well. That's, that's not quite phase two.
Yeah. So just on the council meeting, locations outside the chambers, we haven't, we haven't had one in a while. But maybe we'll talk about where and how we do that. We are looking at one more engagement program with the high school before the end of the year, so we'll discuss that. If you have any ideas, tie them off. University might be an interesting one. We do have to consider our ability to screen and all that sort of stuff to keep up with those transparency goals, but we'll figure something out.
Well, I was thinking of those town hall meetings. I mean, maybe a little short council meeting, but...
Yeah, very inclusive, yeah. Okay, we'll get another one, and we'll bring it to council to see if that works for a bit.
Okay. So I've just got a few more that I'll point out just for clarification. So adopt an action plan to address housing affordability. These aren't numbered, I apologize, but it's kind of three quarters down in healthy community. It talks about task force recommendations have been accepted. I just want an update that's not in the sheet. So the RFP has gone out, and we had quite good response. It hasn't closed yet. And then further to Counselor Heitzman, what you announced before, which is our meeting with, did I say council?
Mayor Heitzman.
How many years has it been? I was looking at Counselor's plan. I've heard back from BC Housing, and they are keen to work with us on a feasibility analysis for the two municipal sites for affordable housing. So we are moving along with that. Next one down, so plan for funding for an improved Brennan Park. Good old SharePoint, for some reason, Robin updated this, but it didn't say. A lot of work has been done on this, and we am now dovetailing it with the real estate, long-term real estate facility strategy, so that it's a comprehensive look at all the facilities, not just Brennan Park. And then if you look at the two at the bottom, and in the draft strategic plan, I've highlighted them, because they have to do with transit, and they were put on deck originally, based on locus of control and how much we could influence it. But the great news is, there's quite a bit of work that's been done on regional transit services, as council is aware. So we brought it out of being on deck and updated it with the detail around all of the work we've done to expand, or Chris's team has done, to work with BC Transit on our transit services. And then below that, in terms of the regional transportation, realistically, to have something in place before the end of your term, we can dream it, but nonetheless, there are meetings happening between the governments. And so we have put that back in, in terms of something we're working on, but I'm not sure if you want that to show on deck still on the strategic plan. Couple more, if you can bear with me. I'll talk fast, that's for sure. Just an update on the mobile lights and speakers under economy, number two, as council knows, we changed that from specifically lights at OCM to working with the arts council on audio equipment and drum kit, which, so it's complete. Economic development, just as an update, Kate has hit the ground running. She's got a draft action plan already, but it's sitting on my desk for review, so that's moving along very well. She's met with a lot of stakeholders. In terms of digital strategy, she's working with format on that, so those initiatives are moving forward. Wayfinding and the entrance sign, which is halfway down economy. The entrance sign between the public art committee and the wayfinding, to be totally candid, literally fell through the tracks. So we are back on track to have a separate entrance sign outside of wayfinding, but this says 2017. Realistically, the construction would be Q1 2018, by the time we have a design. We're going to circle back with the mayor and the public art committee to have a further conversation on this, but I just wanted to highlight that, too. We can come back with more specific dates on that. And those are the only ones I wanted to point out, but certainly if there's any questions or feedback on, you know, we have updated the draft strategic plan based on what we completed in 2016. So far for the whole plan, we've completed 43 of the items, and in progress are 31. It's not really a fair measurement, because some scope are bigger than others.
I am trying to figure out a date in the next month or so that council can go back over strategic plan and do a bit of an update, and are we, Jake, are we, how do we, what do we have on the metallics? Little tougher work, but we'll try to figure that out. Any questions, has council got any?
The only one is the site alteration bylaw rewrite still has 2018, and we just talked about it in our council committee, so that seems like a long time away.
Yeah, that's a miss. We can update that.
And the only other thing, and maybe we can talk about this when we get together in terms of our strategic plan update, but like, we've completed the economic development action plan, and the legal strategy is complete, and the housing piece is complete. But then when you look in the 2017, 18 in progress, it doesn't reference any of the activities rolling out of those. And, like, so it looks like we've created a document that's sitting on the shelf. And so I want something reflected in that, so maybe that's what we need to talk about when we sit down as council, not too late. But that's kind of what I'd like to see reflected in those last three, two months of activity, is some of the things that we're working on.
Yeah. And I think that's the piece that's hard to comprehend, is it says it's complete, it doesn't mean that the strategy plan is implemented or done. It means that we've created the strategy, and now we're, it becomes part of the work plan, and it's being worked on with 300 other companies.
So that's not obvious how we know it is right now, even if we add a line that says beginning implementation of economic development action plan, or digital strategy, or...
Catch that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Figure out a way how we communicate that.
Yeah, through you, Mayor Heitzman. I, you know, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't want to go in and completely change this without a council workshop. And then there's also the line between the strategy and the work plan, right, and where that is in the document or not. But I can assure you that in terms of those strategies, we're certainly actioning them, it's just not captured. I mean, that's why we altered the sacreds to school, because the wording was off. But council wants to update that, and certainly that would be the plan.
It would almost be good for these blue boxes to have, you know, items actioned, and have a bit of a list on, for example, sacreds to school. I know there's been a ton of little things, but, you know, actually have some items that have actioned within the strategies that we adopted.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes, I think that, just to recognize the work that is being done, that it didn't just become a blue board to council.
You know, it says parking strategy initiatives, whatever, done, but have we ticked off every box in the action item list and that, or what has been ticked off, what's yet to come? It's almost like there's a sub, a green...
Very, very astute, because that's exactly how the annual report is built. So under the green and blue boxes lives another document, which is the annual report, and it actions that. And so this is the strategic piece, and then the actioning piece and the promissory piece is that annual report, what did we say we were going to do, what are we doing now, what are we going to do in the future. So we can probably even electronically on our website, document link to those. It was harder to do with the paper, but I bet we can come up with a way to do that. And that might work, you know, it might be easier for color to see exactly. And it also is good, because it gives people a reason to flip through multiple information and communication pieces and sales reports, it's big done. Great. Any more questions on strategic plan? Good job, you did a good job. Motion to, I think it's going to close. And that council fire, something by, council race, all in favor? Close, motion carries.
If I, Councilor Fire, Secretary Barr, Councilor Ray, all in favor, close, motion to adjourn.